Welcome all to our formal session. I call this the order. And today, we're going to have the invocation by me. Thank you. If you could all stand up. Heavenly Father, you are always with us and beside us. Be with us this evening as we consider the affairs of our great city. Give us the patience to listen, the wisdom to decide, and the strength to act. Amen. Okay, if we pledge a way. I'm sorry, my apologies. First, a moment of silence for those who paid the ultimate price for our great city Thank you. And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present.
Okay, thank you. I now need a motion for the certification of the closed session.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second.
The vote is open. Councilmember Bellucci, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have certified the closed session in accordance with the motion to recess.
Hey, thank you. Now, we ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the informal and former sessions of July 11th, 2023, and July 18th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Hey, vote is open.
The vote is open. Vice Mayor, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the minutes as submitted.
Amanda.
Ma'am.
I need to abstain on the 11th because I wasn't here.
Yes, ma'am. We'll note.
Okay, next, in terms of mayor's presentations, we have the privilege of having Delegate Kelly Conyers Fowler and Delegate Anne Farrell Teta here today. Welcome both of you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. Delegate Teta and I are here to present a resolution to you for the city of Virginia Beach. So thank you so much for having us. We want to commend the city of Virginia Beach on its 60-year anniversary. We truly are the greatest city in Virginia. And it is not just because we are the most populous city in the Commonwealth. I believe the people make it great. Let me start at the beginning. Virginia Beach is so unique, situated where the southern mouth of the Chesapeake Bay meets the Atlantic Ocean, our deepest roots in the earliest days of the nation, with Cape Henry serving as the initial landing site in the New World for the Jamestown Settlement. Virginia Beach remained largely rural, but with the arrival of the railroad in 1883, a resort community began to develop near the coast of Princess Anne County, and Virginia Beach was incorporated as a town in 1906. But Virginia Beach continued to grow and become a well-known seasonal vacation destination for families throughout the Commonwealth and the eastern United States. And after becoming an independent city in 1952, Virginia Beach was incorporated with Princess Anne County in 1963. A city that was once only 2 square miles in area merged additionally an additional 253 miles of Princess Anne County to be the city we know today. Tourism accounts for a significant share of Virginia Beach's vibrant economy, with millions of annual visitors accounting for billions of dollars in spending, which supports the thousands of local jobs. Did you know that Virginia Beach is listed in the Guinness Book of World Records as the longest pleasure beach in the world with 38 miles of coastline? Our vibrant tourism offers numerous opportunities for educational and cultural enrichment through the Virginia Museum of Contemporary Arts, the Virginia Aquarium, Marine Science Museum, and the Military Aviation Museum, among others. But we also cannot forget that Virginia Beach also maintains a significant agribusiness sector, with most of the area in the city lying in our rural portion. We are also home to a variety of industries, advanced manufacturers, and national and global corporations.
in the country, in the world.
We have Regent University, Tidewater Community College, Virginia Wesleyan, go Marlins, and ODU through the Higher Education Center. We cannot forget that we are a hub for our national defense with Dam Neck and Oceana
And thank you again. We, as a body, we are, as a city, indeed honored.
just down the road. But our military families are at the heart of what makes the city great.
Okay, moving on now, I'm going to ask Councilmember Rocky Holcomb to read the proclamation
All of us make up the city of Virginia Beach and make it the place we all want to live.
on the Zero Waste Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The people make up the city, and on behalf of the House of Delegates, Delegate Teta and
If I could get members of the Clean Community Commission to come up.
I, we ask you, Mr. Mayor, to accept this commendation on behalf of the people of the
I got a tough order here following up those lawmakers right here, so I'll do the best
city of Virginia Beach. Happy 60th, Virginia Beach.
It's a long walk. It's a long walk.
It's a long walk. We got to get rolling the place for the mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Whereas the first full week of September is recognized internationally as Zero Waste
Thank you. On behalf of a grateful city, we thank you. And it is true, the people are the strength of Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Awareness Week, and whereas the definition of zero waste is producing little or no waste,
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
and whereas the city of Virginia Beach wants to encourage its citizens to waste less by reducing, reusing, recycling, and repurposing, and whereas the city of Virginia Beach recognizes that it is innovation of its citizens that lead to thoughtful solutions regarding zero waste, and whereas the city of Virginia Beach realizes that zero waste will benefit the environment and land in our city, and whereas the city of Virginia Beach acknowledges that zero waste will save the citizens of Virginia Beach financially, and whereas the city of Virginia Beach challenges all businesses in its community to engage its employees and citizens to be more mindful regarding ways to decrease waste, and whereas the city of Virginia Beach encourages all city departments to participate during Zero Waste Awareness Week by educating its citizens on ways to reduce waste. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Virginia Beach will designate the first full week of September as Zero Waste Awareness Week, where it invites all citizens to engage in education and action toward a zero-waste society. Adopted by the City Council of the City of Virginia Beach, the 8th day of August 2023, and presents this resolution duly signed by each member of the Virginia Beach City Council. And, Mr. Mayor, if you could join me down here to present this award.
Come on out this way for shameless photo op. Make a statement, please.
Thank you. On behalf of the Virginia Beach Clean Community Commission, thank you for acknowledging the first full week of September as Zero Waste Awareness Week. Most Virginia Beach residents don't realize that it costs the city over $12 million a year for waste disposal. We look forward to sharing with fellow citizens ideas towards zero waste, including composting food waste at home, recycling correctly, reducing and reusing to help minimize waste. Educating our citizens via an awareness campaign each September will help Virginia Beach reduce the trash in our landfills and save the city on costs associated with waste disposal. We look forward to the opportunity, and we appreciate the support of City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. It is indeed an honor for our council to honor those who deserve to be honored. And I'd like now to invite several members of Troop 477. Isabella Fernandez, Morgan Ramsey, and Anna Sherman, come forward and be recognized. You know, I had the pleasure of meeting these young future leaders of our city and nation at a memorial for the 531 shooting. And they put together a nice group of paperworks, birds, and everything that I really have in my office with pride. So I just want you to come up, say your name, please, to everybody.
I'm Morgan Ramsey.
I'm Anna Sherman.
And I'm Isabella Fernandez.
And their artwork is to present peace and hope to our city. And once again, this is an act of stellar kindness and random act of kindness that you are doing for so many people. Will you come up and please allow me to give you a city seal pen? Thank you. If one of you want to say hello, come on up. Say hello. Come on up and just say, tell us what you do, the type of work you do, and the artwork that you do, and presented me and so many other people. Starting to look like a council meeting. You're in the middle. Come on forward. Okay, at this point, thank you very much for coming. They were speechless. They made a group of beautiful paper cranes that hang by string, and they go around giving them to people, and once again, in signs of peace and hope. Boy, thank you so much. Once again, they helped make our city great. Okay, moving on, right now to a public hearings. The first one is the adornance to adopt the 2023 redistricting plan and authorize implementation of a 10-single-member system of local elections. Will you call the speakers, please?
Yes, Your Honor. The first speaker is Henry Rido, and then Brian Sullivan.
Good evening, Henry.
Members of City Council, staff, and the general public, my name is Henry Rido. I come before you to express my wholehearted support for retaining the 10-1 voting system and writing it into our city charter. Those before sight have known that it was a question of if at-large voting was coming to an end, but rather when and how. Within the city's 2001 redistricting process, I submitted a 10-district map. At-large voting was an obscenity that marginalized the franchise and produced city councils that regularly showed that they didn't care about the residents. The 10-1 will produce city councils that tackle and met needs. Looking forward 22 years ago, I anticipated policy shifts to address our changing demographics. Unfortunately, for the most part, that hasn't happened. That has left us with gaping deficits. I thank Councilman Taylor for holding a housing summit, as that's one of our great cities areas screaming to be addressed. In informal session on June 20th, Mrs. Henley lamented that things the past few years haven't been done the way we've always done them. Seriously, that was supposed to be a problem? 81% of Virginia Beach residents don't want things done the way we've always done them. I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment to salute my good friend, Latasha Holloway. Without her leadership, fortitude, and perseverance, we wouldn't be at this watershed. The residents of Virginia Beach will forever owe her debt of gratitude. Other measures will be needed to restructure our government, city government, for the future. I previously emailed you my suggestions on that. However, the 10-1 voting system is a paramount piece that we need to cement into place. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry.
The next speaker is Brian Sullivan. After Mr. Sullivan is Rick Kowalowicz.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. Thanks to council for providing this opportunity to stand here and say my piece. I've come today to voice my support for the adoption of Judge Jackson's remedy of a 10-1 local district voting system, as outlined in the Weldon Cooper study. According to the Center for Government Research, only about 10% of cities with a population over 200,000 use at-large voting because it's so problematic in providing voter representation. The most popular voting systems for large cities like ours is the local district voting system. And also, I thought of a bit of a criticism to my city council, or at least some of the members on it. You all spent over $1 million fighting this albatross of an outlaid voting system, and then spent another $350,000 for a Weldon Cooper study that informed you that the district voting is hugely popular across all voting demographics. I would expect our city to be a better steward of our tax dollars. If it took the Weldon Cooper study for some of this body to realize how unpopular at-large voting was, then that speaks to a body that became untethered to the voters under the old at-large voting system. That is the best argument to adopt the 10-1 system. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Appreciate your coming.
The next speaker is Rick Kowalowicz, and then Susan Potter.
Good evening.
How you guys doing? I've always supported the district system, but what I don't support is the lawlessness how you did it. The old council violated every single law you could do, violated everybody's rights. They violated the U.S. Constitution, the state constitution, general law, and the city of Virginia Beach charter to have a system that doesn't exist. The city of Virginia Beach doesn't have a 10-1 system by law. It has a 731 at-large system because you didn't follow a court order and change the charter. You didn't do it. So that means you had an illegal election in November 2022. That means everybody that was elected is not duly elected. That's what the law says. People don't realize that the charter takes precedent over general law. The only thing it doesn't take precedent over is the Constitution of the United States and the state constitution. You didn't follow any of those laws. And I'll prove a point to you here today. Today, as of July 1st, three sitting incumbents, at least three, have been collecting money on the 731 system. That's illegal. And there's only one way to fix this. You have to have a special election. Unfortunately, you guys can't do it because you weren't duly elected. What's happened here is just wrong. It's not lawful. You work for the people. Ms. Henley, I grant one thing you said in the paper. You had this Weldon report we spent $350,000 on. 2,112 people got polled on that. There's 450,000 people plus in this city. That's .4 of 1%. The state is clear how to change the charter. There's only two ways you can do it. You have to have a referendum, which is the proper way to do it. The people have the right to pick what system they want. That's the right way to do it. The city of Virginia Beach went about it wrong. The court said, hey, you violated minorities' rights. But you know what you ended up doing? You fixed it. I'm glad you fixed it. You didn't just violate minorities' rights on the election, you violated everybody's rights. So you made it level. So the 14th Amendment has now been fixed because that's what you did. There's three districts that don't have a duly elected person in it. You didn't run a 10-1 system. The court was cleared in the meeting in May. The court felt like you had a PR campaign. And today, the way this ordinance is written as we're redistricting, no, you changed the voting system from at-large to district. The charter says to do that, every person that's running from at-large to district or vice versa has to resign their seat 10 days prior to petition date.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it.
Just do the right thing and follow laws.
Thank you.
And by the way, there's a court order, there will be a court order coming out. I filed a lawsuit, just so you know, in the federal.
The next speaker is Susan Potter. After Ms. Potter is Dorothy Patterson.
Thank you. I'd like to respectfully address the claim that the citizens of Virginia Beach do not understand our history. I've attended or watched the videos of every listening session conducted by the UVA researchers, and I've read every comment on the project website. I'm here to tell you that the voters of Virginia Beach understand the history of our city, and they understand the history of our electoral system. They understand the stakes and implications of the decision to adopt the 10-1 system. 81% of them, 81%, believe in and want you to adopt the 10-1 system. Those who come from elsewhere make a good point. What's the big deal? All throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia and the United States, people vote for the city council members in equal proportional, single-member districts. The sky does not fall. The ground does not shake. Council members decide both local and citywide issues by majority rule and proportional, equal, fair system. If the people of the district don't like their council member's decision, they vote that person out, they vote somebody else in. Democracy works. We don't need to fear democracy. It's just the voice of the community. It's the voice of the people. It's our voice, and we don't need to fear, and we should not ignore the rule of law. It may take a while, but as we have seen, the law and justice almost always win, as Judge Jackson has shown us, and as Allen v. Milligan underscores, the Voting Rights Act of 1965 is the law, and it will be enforced, no matter how many times a vocal, powerful group nostalgic for the bad old days tries to obstruct it. One person, one vote, democracy, the rule of law. This was the message of the Declaration of Independence, that all men are created equal. It's the message of the U.S. Constitution, which tries to achieve a more perfect union. It's the message of the 14th, 15th, and 19th Amendments to the Constitution, which together extended civil rights and voting rights to all adult citizens. Throughout our history, people have argued and fought, not just for the freedom to vote, but the freedom to vote equally. 58 years ago this week, after the infamous events in Selma, Alabama, the quest for the freedom to vote equally culminated in the historic Voting Rights Act of 1965, which guaranteed one person, one vote, proportional representation, no dilution, no suppression, no extra rights for one group of people, no exclusion of another group of people. Just two months ago, on June 8th, in Allen v. Milligan, the U.S. Supreme Court once again reaffirmed the principles of the Voting Rights Act of 1965. This week, the city of Virginia Beach takes a historic step on the historic journey to creating a more perfect city, a city of one person, one vote, a city where all are represented equally, a city where all voices are heard. Please meet this historic moment. Please vote unanimously for the 10-1 system. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dorothy Patterson. After Ms. Patterson is Georgia Allen.
Good evening.
I have come to speak about the proposed ordinance to adopt the 2023 redistricting plan. Let's first set the record straight. We are not adopting a redistricting plan. The Virginia Pilot article dated August 7th, 2023, stated, "The city is wanting to formally adopt a ward-based election system, not a redistricting plan." The ward-based election system is a whole new election system for the city. According to the teleconference between the city and Holloway's attorneys on May 25th of this year, Holloway's attorney stated, "The city is still under the 731 system, which is currently on the books as a matter of law." This means you cannot adopt the proposed redistricting plan. Through a FOIA request, I have read the preclearance letter from the Virginia Attorney General's Office dated January 14th, 2022. The letter gave the okay for the 10-1 election system, but also stated, "Moreover, this certification of no objection does not remove or otherwise alter any requirement imposed upon the city of Virginia Beach by any federal, state, or local ordinance, statute, or regulation, including any requirement imposed by the Department of Elections." The city broke numerous laws in the 2022 election, and even the current Virginia Beach voter registrar had concerns that the charter was not being followed for the 2022 election. This city council is illegal to vote on any matters pertaining to the city. The November 2022 election is technically void due to the charter not being changed to reflect, to allow, the 10-1 system that was used. In addition, three districts did not duly elect people to represent them. Wilson, Bellucci, and Wooton were anointed to their seats. With Virginia being a Dillon Rule state, all changes have to be written in the charter to be able to do it. Otherwise, all actions are void. A court order cannot usurp the law, and the court did not tell the city to break the law to implement the 10-1 system. Due to the facts that I have stated, and that the city charter is the ultimate law for the city to follow, the city immediately needs authorization from the state to hold a special election under the 731 system, with seven districts being elected only by voters in their districts, since this is a system by law that we should be operating under in order to have a legal city council. Second, the city needs to then go to the Virginia General Assembly with the proposed 10-1 election system changed to the Virginia Beach city charter. By doing so, the city can then implement the 10-1 election system for the 2024 election.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I just want to see laws followed by everyone, so we're not a lawless society.
The next speaker is Georgia Allen. After Ms. Allen.
including any requirement imposed by the Department of Elections. The city broke numerous laws in the 2022 election, and even the current Virginia Beach voter registrar had concerns that the charter was not being followed for the 2022 election. This city council is illegal to vote on any matters pertaining to the city. The November 2022 election is technically void due to the charter not being changed to allow the 10-1 system that was used. In addition, three districts did not duly elect people to represent them. Wilson, Belluchi, and Wooton were anointed to their seats. With Virginia being a Dillon Rule state, all changes have to be written in the charter to be able to do it. Otherwise, all actions are void. A court order cannot usurp the law, and the court did not tell the city to break the law to implement the 10-1 system. Due to the facts that I have stated and that the city charter is the ultimate law for the city to follow, the city immediately needs authorization from the state to hold a special election under the 7-3-1 system, with seven districts being elected only by voters in their districts, since this is a system by law that we should be operating under in order to have a legal city council. Second, the city needs to then go to the Virginia General Assembly with the proposed 10-1 election system changed to the Virginia Beach City Charter. By doing so, the city can then implement the 10-1 election system for the 2024 election.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I just want to see laws followed by everyone so we're not a lawless society.
The next speaker is Georgia Allen. After Ms. Allen is Allison Lewis. Ms. Lewis, Ms. Allen is first.
Good evening, Georgia.
Good evening. Good evening. Greetings. We come before you again to speak in favor of the 10-1 election system. And to be honest, I must tell you, it has been exhausting. But you know what is not exhausting? Standing up for our children, our grandchildren, great-grandsons, and those yet unborn. What is not exhausting is to love this nation so much that we truly want to see in our lifetime, justice prevail. What is not exhausting is to call upon our elected officials to adopt an ordinance to codify the 10-1 voting system for the City of Virginia Beach. And what is not exhausting is the expectation that we have serving on our city council, men and women of goodwill, of integrity, who knows the difference between right and wrong. So tonight, I call upon you to codify the 10-1 voting system. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Allison Lewis. After Ms. Lewis is Michael Hashamie.
Good evening.
Thank you. Mayor Dyer and council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you. According to an article in the Virginian Pilot last month, "The city needs a decision on the recently imposed 10-1 wards-based system, or it risks a lawsuit." Quoting Deputy City Attorney Christopher Boynton's statement in that article, quote, "A federal court judge," unquote, "is threatening to not hold a local election in 2024." As you know, citizens residing in Local District 5 and other districts had no votes for candidates for either the council or the school board elections that year. I would like to just say how very concerned I am at the specter of, yet again, not being able to cast a vote at the local level for city council or school board. In addition, I have questions about the validity of the survey. It seems to me that 4,500 inquiries are not adequate to correctly assess the people's actual choices in this matter. I am actually in favor of the ward-based system, but I don't believe that that survey was properly conducted. I certainly was never conducted. And I'd like to know just exactly how it was conducted, and that the number, 4,500, does not seem adequate for a survey, which is obviously being taken as gospel by the city in its statements that it regards the survey results as being positive. I don't know if they are or not, but I don't think that that survey was adequate. That's all. Thank you very much again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Michael Hashamie. And then James Lumen.
Good evening.
Good evening, one and all. All right, I'll try to keep this quick. So recently, there was a Princess Anne Independent article that was discussing this topic, and I just want to do a couple of quotes and expand upon them. Judge Jackson was quoted as saying, "Virginia Beach for years has been engaged in discrimination against minority voters. Now we brought this to the city, and they're still messing around with the issue. They need to get in there, take care of the issue, and stop finding ways to delay things. First, the public weigh in, then a referendum. It's effectively over." And after our study, thanks to Councilwoman Shulman, we actually now have a public input, although it might not be the amount that some people want. But, you know, not everyone votes in a year or two. We don't have 100% participation when elections happen. So you're always going to have people who are not putting their voice into the process of what should go on. But I would like to say, though, to quote you, Mayor, is that you said Judge Jackson put us in a total no-win situation. There's just not a path. Now, when I hear this, who's not winning? Because 81% of people, according to a sample of 4,500 citizens, said that this is a win situation. So there might be 21% that don't think that this is a win situation. But we live in a country where it's a majority rule. We don't live in minority rule. That's what we send our DoD dollars to fight against, right? I think you of all people would understand that, Mr. Mayor. So I would just like to say that we do live in a majority country still, where majority rules. So those who are in the minority, they have their rights, but they don't have the right to overturn the majority. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is James Lumen. And then Gay Wiggs.
Good evening.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. I would like to, I've come up here to support the 10-1 system. But since a lot has been already said about the 10-1 system, I guess the purpose of my discussion will be to try to drive a stake through the 7-3-1 system. The problem with the 7-3-1 system is that the at-large members of the council, obviously, they have no special authority. They have a district that's 10 times larger than the members that have individual districts, but they have no special voting authority. They have no extra staff, though they're charged with supposedly, I guess aspirationally, being in charge to look out over the whole city. But again, there's no requirement that they do that in the charter or anywhere else. They could vote very parochially on their own interests, or quite likely that they will vote on the interests of the big money that puts them in. Because in a city like Virginia Beach, getting elected in a city-wide election where everybody has to vote for your position is a monumental task, and it requires money. That's not required in the 10-1 system. So really, what the 7-3-1 system is, it's almost a hybrid, it's almost a hybrid system between a House of Representatives and a Senate. You have the district members who are the House, and then you have these three members that are sort of the Senate because they cover the whole city. But that doesn't make any sense because they don't have any additional power. They don't have any additional resources. They only have one vote. And the system's been flawed, and it's time that it needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
The next speaker is Gay Wiggs. After Ms. Wiggs is Frederick Ford.
Good evening.
Good evening. I don't have any prepared speeches or anything written down. I don't have any statistics. I read the article. I didn't get the newspaper until yesterday. My husband's always late and giving me the newspaper. And I saw that y'all were going to be meeting on this. My concern, and I'm not going down the black-and-white road. I'm not doing it. I'm here because I love my city of Virginia Beach. I moved here from Norfolk 32 years ago because I wanted a better education system for my children. That was my choice. I decided not to go private-school route. I decided to move to another city. That was my choice, and it was my choice to move to Kimpsville. And I love the opportunities that my children have had. My concern here is, I pay taxes. I pay taxes to Virginia Beach. I feel like my rights was violated when I could no longer pick my city council that was going to dictate what you were going to do with my money. That's the problem I had. So we all talk about the Declaration of Independence. That came out of the Revolutionary War. And the Revolutionary War came out of taxation without representation. So if you want to have a history lesson, maybe that's where we need to start. I feel like I have a right as to what goes on at that oceanfront. I was very outspoken about an arena that was going to be financed by the communists. And I feel like it is my city. If it wasn't, I wouldn't still be here. I'd make the choice to move. Everybody's moving from New York to Virginia, to North Carolina, to South Carolina because they don't like what's happening. Well, if you don't like what's happening in your community, move. If you don't like what's happening in your city, move. But yes, this country runs on the majority rules. We didn't make those rules. They just happen. It just is what it is. This is more important than light rail. It needs to be on a referendum, and the citizens of Virginia Beach need to vote on it. Period. I don't know what the percentages are. I don't care. All I know is this is more important than light rail, and we demanded that light rail be put on the voting ballot. And this needs to be on the voted ballot and voted on by the citizens of Virginia Beach. Period. And if you don't like it, move.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Frederick Ford. And then Seko Varner.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. First of all, I'm in favor of the 10-1 system. And I was one of the people who participated in the survey, as well as participated in three of the meetings that were held around. And I'm a little concerned, and I heard this in a former session of the city council from, I think, Councilwoman Wilson or Henley. I can't remember. I think it was Henley. Concerned about the fact that the survey only included responses from a fairly small percentage of the total population. And I just want to say that my early career, I was a statistician. And for people who don't understand, surveys, no survey is done with a large percentage of the total audience that it's trying to get answers to. It's impossible. So it's always going to be a small percentage of the total audience. And there are statistical rules for figuring out how to come up with a representative sample. And this was done by the group that did our survey. And they reported that they have a plus or minus 3% confidence level that they haven't made an error. That if they repeated this survey 100 times, 95 or 97 times out of 100, they would get the same results. So it's valid statistically for making decisions, and people need to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Seko Varner, and then Juanita Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you all for what you're doing. And I want to take this moment to ask the Almighty and our predecessors to bless your lives, bless your endeavors, bless your families, and bless your decisions. I thank you for what you're doing and the decisions that you have to make, the hard decisions for our city. Delegate Fowler was up a little earlier, and she said, "The people make it great." And that just kind of stuck with me. The people make it great. The people express their love for the 10-1 process at city council meetings. They express their desire for 10-1 in surveys and in research data. But the city council, I have to admit, I was a bit disappointed that taxpayer, hard-earned taxpayer money was spent to determine if there were other options other than what the people expressed. Now, I realize we have to do our due diligence. So I'm not upset that due diligence was done. But the due diligence has been done. The results are in, and the results are similar to what the people expressed earlier. Now, I know a few of you personally. So when I pick up my phone and call, you know, I call Rocky, I know I'm going to be heard. You know, when I call and talk to Mike, I know I'm going to be heard. You know, I know I can call Sabrina and Mayor Dyer, and they'll pick up the phone, and I'll be heard. But I don't think our citizens were heard. And city council, I ask you to do a different job hearing the citizens of Virginia Beach. Those resources could have helped our city in different ways. I ask you to do a different job of hearing our people in Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Juanita Williams. After Ms. Williams is Gary McCollum.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Juanita Williams. Some of you all know me because I work for Congresswoman Lain Loria. And I ran her constituent services, so I'm used to hearing from the people. And as a 24-year Navy veteran, if we sat around in the chief's mess wasting man-hours every meeting surveying our troops, we would lose our credibility, and no aircraft would leave the flight deck or the runway. And the reason I say this is because the people have spoken in favor of the 10-1, single-member system. After the public input, I went to some of those and the surveys. I feel that the elected officials who don't want this system, a fair election system, only want to remain in power, and the citizens see this. I knock doors for a lot of the officials, and people say they don't think their votes are going to count. There's people out here who are saying, you know, well, the survey is one way. So if the survey went another way, then everybody's like, oh, well, I think it's okay if the survey went the way that they want it, or the votes. Not everybody votes. Not everybody does surveys. Not everybody answers the phone when you're calling them about the elections. We all know this. So we can't act like this isn't how everything runs with the city, the state, or on the federal side. I think that another man-hour shouldn't be wasted discussing this, and it should be voted on, and the 10-1 system should be in effect. That's all I have to say. And your constituents are listening. And walking.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Gary McCollum. After Mr. McCollum is Julius Hoggard.
Good evening, Gary.
Good afternoon. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I want to talk just a moment about representative government. It's been said, one person, one vote. And before I go there, I want to talk about some points that were made around the, was this survey by UVA statistically valid? Let's be clear. They said it was valid. They said that the data was sound. So anyone talking about it didn't make sense, you're just grabbing for straws at this point. And in fact, we paid for it. We paid them $350,000, which I had an issue with. Councilman Sherman, you and I had several conversations about that. But it's done. It was paid for. It is valid, so let's get off of that. But I want to go back to representative government. One person, one vote. We know that the 10-1 system gave us the most diverse city council in the history of this city, 60 years. That's what it did. It also took moneyed interests out of the elections because now, all of your politicians, you know how this works. When you run in the old system, you ran in 100-plus precincts. In the new system, you run in a district, 10, 12 districts. That's a whole lot less money you need to run a campaign than the old system. So the moneyed interests have less influence in a 10-1 system than the old system. But the other thing, going back to the UVA study, it said, and it's been said already tonight, 81% of the citizens said they want 10-1. So I applaud you. I thank you for, again, I was against the survey, but we've done it. The people said what they wanted. They've told us again, they want the 10-1 system. Thank you for having the public hearing tonight. And I would ask that you would move posthaste to go ahead and codify this, get this before the General Assembly so we can be done with it. Last point I'll make is this. Last point I'll make is this. We need to also take another step. And that is, we should not be appointing people to sit in these appointed seats. We need to have a law passed that when there's a vacancy on this body or school board, that we immediately have a special election, because we should not have appointed people sitting in those seats that you choose that we did not choose. So I would hope that we would, this would be a first step tonight. But let's move forward and let's finish the job. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary.
The next speaker is Julius Hoggard. And then Andrew Jackson.
Hey, good evening. I just want to say, I've been listening to a lot of the chatter that's been going on for the city council. I'm in favor for the 10-1 system, mainly because it brings diversity. And it seems like the ones that don't want the 10-1 system and want to go to the 7-3 system want to keep it the old way. And I'm just saying, do right the most highest looking. Do right the most highest looking. Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrew Jackson. And after Mr. Jackson is Carl Wright.
Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening. Mayor, vice mayors, council members, Mr. Duhaney, Mr. Stiles. All of you know me, but for those that don't, I'm Andrew Jackson in the present sense. You do what you want with that. Democracy, that means the rule of the people. It seems this right itself is in peril right here at home. Look for yourself. What is supposed to be of, by, and for the people is about the will of the people, certainly not about what is decided behind closed doors by a small group of people. It is not about some small group directing those we elected to do their will. We fought for a system that was fair, where each district had a duly-elected councilperson to work with and for the people of that respective district. A system where those of each district could determine who that councilperson would be by our votes. Now, we again see an old plot. To select a person for a council seat with total disregard, for the wishes of the people of that district. The folks not represented, that's folks, I'm sorry. Folks, that is not representative government. The facts are compelling. Voter disenfranchisement. Let me make it clear. It means the citizens are being deprived of a right, especially the right to vote and that determining who their councilperson would be. That doesn't happen when you pick a person to sit in a seat. Simply stated, this mayor, vice mayor, and certain members of council seem to be saying, in some discussions, the right to vote will be for the citizens or other citizens is meaningless. This even after being advised that it was not a wise decision and in fact could be considered unconstitutional to sit someone in a seat just because we picked them. What we have here is a game of musical seats and even advancement of a position of sheriff, which in and of itself needs some order. Then, of course, an additional move from the school board. Oh, yeah, the plot thickens. But beware, it might just thicken in the halls of justice. Meaning saddle up for the ride through the halls of justice, because we need to go there again if we find there's any playtime. There has been a large, been large sums of people's money trying to avoid what we, the people, have told you we want. Even the group you sent to listen and the polls and the feelings and the desires of a 10-1 system was given a thumbs up by a large majority.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Appreciate it.
Okay.
The next speaker is Carl Wright.
Hey, Carl, how you doing?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Duhaney. Welcome to Virginia Beach. Here we go again. Here we go again, the same old thing. I can't, I've been dealing with this myself personally for 25 years. And they were dealing with it 25 years before then. And it's all about proper representation and accountability. My thing is that I want to say to the folks out there in TV land that's watching to hold the city council accountable. 81% of the people said, "We want a 10-1, 10-1 district system." 81%. And I went to about 90% of those meetings. White, black, brown. All of them were there. They spoke. I don't even understand why we are holding this meeting tonight. I'm with the people. 81% of my neighbors in the city of Virginia Beach say they want a 10-1 system. The taxpayers, the ones that pay the bills. But yet, we got a small nucleus of people that say, "Look, we're going to push back anyway." That's not right. We've got to change that system. The old system is gone. It's not coming back. The federal courts have spoken. The lady from the legislature was here. Why are we continuing to spend tax dollars and time on something that's not coming back, Mr. Mayor? I understand there's a small group of people that still want power. You still have your powers, just in your district. You still got power. My representative is up there. And if you, if you folks have representatives, they don't call you back, they don't do what they're supposed to do, you don't feel they're representing you well, then we have an opportunity to put someone in there that do what we need them to do. That's fair government. We should not have people in there for 18 years just because it's beneficial to them. That's not proper government. I'm here for those that's coming behind me. See, I don't want them to go through what we had to go through, Mr. Mayor. It's been a struggle. Boots on the ground, fighting all the way. And it's time to change. So hopefully, hopefully, prayerfully, Ms. Henley and Ms. Wilson, you good guys, and Mr. Belucci and those folks, listen, hopefully we'll do the right thing. I see all these good people. How close can we, how much closer can we get? 81% of the folks have wanted 10-1 system. I don't know what else we can do. I don't know how much more money we can spend on it, how much more time we can spend on it. But hopefully, we'll make the right decision and give the people what they want. What'd they say? Get the people what? Give them what they want? That's what I hope we do, Mr. Mayor. Get the people what?
Thank you very much, Carl.
Mayor, that's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, our next public hearing is appropriation of 22.5 million in public facility revenue bonds to finance public infrastructure improvements, Ray Damneck Road, London Bridge Connector improvements.
We have one speaker, Brittany Russell.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right, let's make sure you guys can hear me okay. Cool. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, and the City Council of Virginia Beach. It is an honor and a pleasure to speak before you today, but I wish it were under better circumstances. I am here in firm opposition to the proposed plan to build a large five-story facility in a farm zone area near London Bridge, Damneck, and Harper's Road, also known as Project Beach. I've been a Virginia Beach resident my entire life. My home in the Mayberry neighborhood of Virginia Beach has been my home since I started high school. It has been witness to several cherished memories and milestones. And I am deeply disappointed that the area is going to be disrupted not just by previously-approved Dominion power lines, but by a mysterious applicant that will not reveal themselves, to be held accountable and to face the questions and concerns posed by the citizens of Virginia Beach and their future neighbors. I want to put on the record that the proposed plan has failed on multiple accounts to address those concerns raised by one of the two neighborhoods adjacent to the lot. And I wish to share those concerns with you now and remind you all that these residents have tried time and time again to stop this project from moving forward, only to have the city council disregard their voices and continue to move forward. First and foremost, there are many, many concerns about the noise and light pollution that will accompany this facility. The plan outlines that the 650,000-square-foot facility will include 55 loading docks, 420 tractor-trailer parking spaces, and 1750 parking spaces that will accommodate over 1,000 employees. These are shift-work jobs, which means that these will work well into the night. Those tractor-trailers and employees will be directed along a road that is perpendicular to the Mayberry neighborhood, sending bright LED tractor-trailer headlights directly into residents' backyards at all hours of the night. Lost my place. I lost my place. Those tractor-trailer employees will be directed along a road that's perpendicular to the Mayberry neighborhood. And these will also contribute to all hours of the night and general traffic noise. The claim that these concerns were addressed by berms, trees, fencing, but none of that has been addressed in the Mayberry neighborhood. It's not sufficient. The power lines have been in the way. Additionally, the feeder road will dump out along the London Bridge Road next to Prince George Estates. London Bridge Road frequently has drivers flying through the road with no stoplights between Castleton and a few miles down the road near Strawbridge. And that is a blind turn on both ends that increase the risk of traffic accidents and collisions. On top of that, during the fall, when Hunt Club starts their Halloween festivities, traffic backs up like crazy down London Bridge Road and can disrupt basically employee traffic and regular resident traffic. Again, this has been mentioned, but those concerns have not been addressed. The applicant's track record here in the Commonwealth has also been dodgy at best. At the announcement that they were building a site in Arlington...
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on any agenda item?
No, sir.
Mr. Attorney, do I have to read the speaker's policy if there's no speakers?
No.
Nah, didn't think so. Okay, consent agenda, please.
Yes, everything is on consent, Mr. Mayor. Number one is the ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a 10-foot city maintenance easement and 100-foot city drainage easement at 920 Sandoval Drive, ready to maintain a wood fence, concrete driveway, frame shed, concrete pad, pool area, wood dock, and covered fireplace area in District 5. Number two, ordinance to appropriate 1.2 million of fund balance from this general fund